I'd like to welcome everyone to Swan County Board of County Commissioners meeting of February 16, 2021 at 6:00 PM. At this time, if everyone will please stand, I ask Commissioner Fleming to do our invocation and pledge.
Let's pray. Our Father, we come this afternoon humbly before you're standing in the need of prayer. Our Father, we come because we need you. Father, we realize that you made us. Bless those that are standing in the need of prayer this afternoon. Bless our country, our leaders. But we need you and we can't get along without you. Somebody is burdened down, but have mercy. Father, we pray that you bless those that have trespassed against each and every one of us. We ask for forgiveness. We pray that you be with us this night. Look over our chair tonight. Look over the rest of the commissioners tonight. Look over our staff and have mercy. We need you and we need you to guide us tonight. We pray that you forgive us for all our sins and bless us with the blessing we stand in need of. Father, we ask these and all blessings and many more blessings in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Say your prayers.
The United States of America, in the true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, I'd like to welcome everyone this evening. And gentlemen, as always, I'd like to make mention that if we have any other ladies come, please let's make sure they have a seat, which everybody always does and I'm grateful for that. But also, I'd like, some folks wonder why I have Commissioner Fleming do our invocation a lot of times. It's because he takes us to church when he does it and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Kind of gets the man in here with us. But I appreciate you for that, Mr. Fleming.
Thank you.
At this time, we will begin. First order of business is approval of minutes from our February 2nd, 2021 regular board meeting and also February 9th, 2021 special call meeting. Do I have any questions, comments, or do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hale?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fleming. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving ahead to the consent agenda, have items two through 14. Have any questions or comments? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, also motion to approve.
Got a motion by Commissioner Fleming?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving right along, gentlemen. General business, item number 15. Discussable possible board action award proposal for splash pad pool contractor to Oakwell's Aquatics for construction of splash pad. Authorize staff to execute the contract pending county attorney approval and authorize issuance of notice to proceed and sign all necessary documents for the project. Mr. Greg Scott, welcome, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for the board. Appreciate you being here tonight. Just a little backtrack just slightly, just so everybody's aware where we started. Back in November 10th, the commission approved us to purchase the items on the splash pad, starting with Vortex and related products on a buying group program and then your RFP for construction and funding out of the convention center fund. So tonight, we need to, if it's the wishes of the board, to approve the RFP for Oakwell's Aquatics for their construction piece of that project. And Mr. Chairman, if we could also, we passed out and had it in the packet before and cleaned it up some, the funding mechanism for all this and I think it'd be appropriate to be at least a nod of approval of that also.
Yes, sir.
I'd be glad to answer any question anybody has.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. I would say at this time, each commissioner has a copy of that. We're all looking at the same thing here, kind of where the proceeds would come from to do the project. Another thing I'd like to do is, I mean, it's questions for each one of us may have, but I've asked Mr. Brandon Fernal to come this evening. He's president of Rotary. I'd like for him to maybe get up and say a few comments and if we have any questions for him, he could clarify anything that we may have a question about. Welcome, Mr. Fernal.
Good evening. Thank you.
State your name and address for the record.
Brandon Fernal, 6560 76th Drive, Live Oak, Florida.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thanks for having me. We're excited about this. I know that there's been a lot of work, moving parts. Greg Scott's been great to work with in terms of getting this splash pad going. I know that our contribution, our part of involvement in this, we agreed to have a goal of $100,000. We're getting ready to kick off our official campaign on Monday, 22nd, and realistically, I'm looking at it from a perspective of a 90-day outlook and that would take us into May, which is almost when we're anticipating the potential completion of the splash pad. And that being said, our goal of 100,000, we're about to roll it out to the public, to our board, I mean, our club, but we're already very confident in having pledges of over half, halfway there. So really encouraged by that. We've already identified very, several other sources that are going to be involved and that are going to give. We just don't know what those dollar amounts are yet. Those are being, discussions are being made. So I don't want to be overly optimistic, but I see this becoming a reality very, very soon in the next 90-day period. So we're excited about that. But I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Does anyone have a question for Mr. Fernal at this time?
I do. Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Mr. White.
Mr. Fernal, have you collected any of that $100,000 yet?
No, we have not.
And is the Rotary guaranteeing $100,000?
When we originally presented this, we presented it as a goal and, but through the discussions we've had and the sources that we've identified, again, don't want to be overly confident, but we're, we would like to, I don't want to walk in here and say we're going to exceed that, but we feel very confident we're going to certainly meet that.
Any other questions for Mr. Fernal?
I mean, I would, I'm a, I will say, I'm a member of Rotary also and I've seen the enthusiasm in the club.
Can we get 20,000 from you?
Sir?
Can we get 20,000 from you? Start off the pledge campaign there for the guys?
I thought you told me before the meeting you weren't going to cause any problems.
Just recommendation.
But I will say-
Looking for a consensus?
Yeah. I'm sorry.
I will say there's great enthusiasm in the club and I don't see it being an issue myself. I just offer that.
Can I go back to Mr. White's question? So we could have collected some of these funds already, but the way we're doing it is through a 501(c)(3) status. So we're going to collect these kind of at one time instead of having lots of different checks flying around and then send them into our foundation and then that check will be written to the county.
Well, I understand you're a banker and you're just saving all that interest on that money that you don't want to go ahead-
Well, we want you to be able to capitalize on this. Doxins too, though.
Fair enough. Any other questions at this time? Seeing none, oh, thank you, Mr. Fernal. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I ask Greg something else?
Yes, sir.
Is this, this $355,500, is that going to be the total amount that it's going to take to do this?
Well, when we bid out or did the RFP, it was for labor. Concrete and materi, or concrete and steel will be buying that, purchasing that, we'll say the taxes on that. So it'll be slightly over that because of the concrete and other incidentals. That's, that's the out-of-pocket to the other, the vendors.
Anything else, Commissioner?
I would like to circle back around to Commissioner Land's question about the 20,000.
Oh, boy.
If you look at your sheet here, I've exceeded that and I gave 60,000 from District Four.
Good point.
Fair enough.
Is that a challenge to me? No, let's stop, right?
So if we can get a consensus from these other districts, we may be able to get where we need to be.
I'm going to save mine for later.
Also, is anything else for Mr. Scott at this time?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman. I just, I would say, I believe I was at, I'm not a member of the road, but I was there as a, as a guest that day when you guys were discussing this, y'all's board.
Yes.
And I do, there was a lot of enthusiasm there and a lot of locals and local leaders that were, I could tell were behind this and I could tell they were willing to do what it had to do. So that's all I had to say.
Any other questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, also motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Fleming?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Land. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving ahead to item 16. Mr. Harris.
I can give you the short version of this if you would like. It's time for us to submit our list of roads to DOT and I provided information on what had been submitted for the last five years and then approved projects and then you've got a list of roads that you need to make a decision on. The two roads that we have gone ahead and presented to you, but the prioritization were the final piece or final phase of County Road 49, south of 252, so that that would complete that project because of the other phases that have been approved. And then you've got a second road in there that's proposed as priority number two and that's County Road 137 from US 90 to County Road 136, without a doubt the worst road in the county. You have two additional projects in here. County Road 250, which has been submitted every year for at least five years and I didn't go back any farther than that. I had, that list that you have is from DOT. We asked them to send over the list that they had of what we had been submitting. And then you've got 184th Road included in here as well. This is a project that would be a paved road between 137 over to the county, Columbia And then County Road 136 from the city limits back east, for those that starts in town as Duval and continues east. That project was originally supposed to go from the city limits all the way out to I-75 and the first, a first segment of it got completed and nothing else has been done since. So that project is in your book as well, if you want to consider that one. But we get to submit three projects. That's all they're going to allow in the system at the end of the day. So I've given you two that we believe should be priority one and two. And you've got a third one there and you can change all of them if you wish. But before this meeting's over, I'm going to need for the board to decide at the very least what the third project's going to be.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
On County Road 250, surface 239 place to 193rd phase, road, phase one, would that be from 90 to?
No.
That won't be?
This is 250.
Okay.
250, this, 250 runs between 51 and Downing Park.
Right.
So it's a section of that roadway.
Okay.
And Commissioners, let me just tell you, I'll go ahead and say this. I went out there and wrote it the other day to see if it had changed any since I'd been out there last and it really had not, but it has a lot of bad areas in it, very much like what you were familiar with on County Road 49, probably the first mile and a half south of US 90 before we went in there a year or so ago and cut out the bad areas and dug out and patched those areas. And we did that because we knew it would be a number of years before County Road 49 got reconstructed. Whatever happens here today, I'm just going to use this for illustration purposes. If 250 were approved today, it would still be at least five years before the project got done. What you're looking at in your book is a phased project because everyone's fairly confident DOT isn't going to approve that project as a single project. So it was broken down into this section. But what I would propose is that regardless of what happens here today, that we come back with a plan and actually have the measurements to go in there and cut out the bad areas where there's a lot of clay and a lot of settling has occurred, dig all that out, compact it like we did on 49 and pave that to make it safer until some reconstruction actually occurs. Now those sections are going to very likely exceed the limits of this project as it's written up in here because I would do all of those bad areas that we could do, which, you know, just up and down the entire length of the project. So I would come back in your next meeting. Again, I'm just saying that regardless of what happens here today, I still think that that's something that's going to need to be done because if you consider that, if the, if DOT, and I'm just going to go ahead and say it, DOT hasn't approved the project in five years and they haven't approved 136 in five years either. I mean, we submitted that previously. It was originally one project. So I don't have any idea what they may do, but if they were to approve the portion that we've submitted in your paperwork right there, you'd still have another portion of that project that has to come back. It's realistic to believe that if, if this section took five years, that it could be six or seven years total before the next phase of it were to be completed if they approved it as well. So my point is that I think that we need some type of interim plan regardless of what happens with the submittals and regardless of what happens with DOT selection. But I'll bring that back because we'd have to identify a source of funding for that as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
May I ask Mr. Harris a question?
Yes, sir.
Couple of questions. In regard to, number one, the process, what is our process? Like, do we, do we, are we looking at metrics? Is that too loud? Are we looking at metrics like-
You're not too loud. I'm just having a hard time hearing you. I keep turning my left ear, I seem to be able to hear better.
Are we looking at any metrics? Like what is our process as a county? I mean, I've never been through a road selection process.
We turn it over to North Florida Professional Services and they evaluate the criteria established by DOT. Now historically, I can speak to some of that. In fact, it'd be a good idea to go ahead and speak to some of the history here because it, the whole process has changed, not necessarily criteria, but the process has changed over the last 10 years. 10 years ago, we could submit five projects a year and at that time, the projects that we submitted, we were fairly confident those projects were going to be approved. And a lot of those got approved and we got a lot of projects done for, I don't know, maybe five years and things started changing. The funding started changing. There's essentially a pot of money that was available to the small counties and at some point, a decision was made to not only make that money available to small counties but to municipalities as well. I don't believe they increased the funding. They just took that pie and started slicing it up even more. Shortly thereafter, we were informed initially that, well, you can only submit four projects now. And I believe that before we even started submitting four, it was changed to three. And I think it was last year during the legislative delegation meeting, the chairman, or maybe the year before, I can't remember, but I remember Commissioner Gamble and I were there and we had a conversation with the senator and the representative. And when we started talking about road funding and this particular program, Scrap and Scoop, a comment was made by the senator that we should be excited because the legislature added more funding during that last legislative session. And I was kind of confused by that and questioned him. I said, well, we haven't seen any increase in funding or any increase in the number of projects that were being funded. And what we realized later when we inquired from DOT staff was that all of that additional funding actually was dedicated to the Panhandle to clean up behind the hurricane. So there wasn't any additional funding included. But the criteria that you question, the metrics, if you will, are pretty much the same as they've always been. And there were some primary criteria that we always used. There were about half a dozen and those are pretty much still in place. And I, I can't tell you how DOT evaluates those because we're not a party to that evaluation process once they take it over and make their decisions. I'm going to theorize that they use a lot of the same criteria, but then they may add others as well.
Can we, and I know that this list is still up for discussion tonight, but is there any chance we could invert the 250 and do it the other way, like 51 to 193rd? I believe the traffic counts are higher, so it would accommodate, invert the, they're going to, DOT is getting such a-
The length of the project?
Yeah, just invert the-
Change, change the order?
Yeah, instead of starting on the bridge end, start on the 51 end. I think the traffic counts are higher.
I don't, I don't have a passion either way.
You can, you can attempt that, but-
Let me tell you what hap-
As with 49.
Yeah. Let me, let me tell you about my own experience. I tried to do that with 49. Now, we had been submitting 49 and all of a sudden we got the news that it was going to be done. We were excited because I think everyone recognized that the north end of that project is the worst portion of it. Well, lo and behold, we get a list sent to us that says that it's starting on the south end at 27, working its way north and that it was going to be a phased project. So I went to DOT and had more than one conversation about changing that project and starting at the north end and working south. And it didn't make any difference how many times I went. It didn't happen. And I even had, I can't remember if I was meeting with one of the commissioners and some of the DOT staff. And let me say first of all, I'm not critical of DOT staff. They do a wonderful job for us and we recognize that they have their limitations because of funding, but we took them for a ride and went down 49 to show them just how rough it was. And although they all admitted that they needed six-point harnesses in my truck, they still wouldn't change the limits of that project and switch it around the other way. So we ended up coming in. Our best solution at the time was to do just what I described. We went in there as an interim approach and cut out all the bad stuff on the north end and did the best job that we could with it. But yes, you can change. I don't know where all of the bad spots are in relationship to switching this thing around based on traffic counts, but I will tell you, they're going to perform their own evaluation. And if they think that it needs to start at the other end, the opposite end, then that's what they're going to write up.
But I, I mean, and I understand, I've, I've kind of lived through what Mr. Harris is telling you when it come to 49. I mean, obviously we all, a lot of us wanted it to start on this end, but they just wouldn't. But, you know, I would, I would say that's up to the, up to the commissioner of that district. If that's what your request is, then you represent the people there and if you want to turn in that item for, from 51, going, I mean, I think, I mean, I think that's the person that should make the calls, is what I'm saying, for each district. I mean, we tried to make it on ours, but it just, they wouldn't have none of it.
I was just thinking out loud because I think the roller coasters, there's one there close to Rocky Sink Road and there's another one on the, it would be the east side of 193rd, which would be the other phase right by Clayland Road is where the-
Right.
I get most of the complaints from and that, that's why I asked, and I haven't compared the actual traffic counts recently, but I would, common sense makes me believe that most of these folks in that community are driving back and forth to Live Oak. So the Live Oak end would maybe see a higher traffic count than the bridge end. It was just not, just a-
Yeah.
We'll see, on 49, the higher traffic count would have been on the north end as well.
And they still didn't do it.
But regardless, the bad dips in it's going to need to be addressed now and they need to be addressed from one end to the other, whatever funding we can come up with because you're so far out, it don't matter which section they do. You know, I mean, if it's five to seven years before you get anything, we need to, you know, we need to fix anything we can from 51 to Allen Park. I mean, in my opinion, I'm just, all in opinion.
Well, I, speaking of funding, I was going to share this a little bit later, but I found us in the budget a little over three and a half million dollars sitting in roads that we, that we got. And honestly, I want, my idea wasn't to use it on 250, it was use it on 184th. My thought process on 184th, I'm very familiar with 120th and we did, our guys did the, the right-of-way, our guys did the base and then we subbed out the chip seal on 120th. My thought process on 184th is if, and I've spoke to the clerk and this, this, these funds are there and they're in road and bridge carried up, 1.7 was carried over from last year, 1.7 million. I would be on board with seeing if our guys could start clearing the right-of-way on 184th and do what we did on 120th and using our funds. I mean, it's the thing, it's a little over two and a half miles long and then use our equipment to put the base down and then sub out the asphalt. That would get us a, that'd get that project completed 18, 24 months, I would think, in-house if you tell me that we're capable, you know, of doing that and-
I think we're capable. I wouldn't, I can't even speak to a timeline right now. We're still trying to get, if it'll stop raining long enough, we're just trying to get started out there on 175th at the Catalyst site because our timeline is running out on the state allocation that we received, which may cover the cost of the asphalt out there. That money that you're talking about has been our rainy day fund for projects, to be honest with you. And it's also used for, let me say that generally, everything that we don't have in play at the time is money that's a part of the overall funding that we can access if we have to to keep things going while other revenues are being collected. But that funding is absolutely available for roads. There's no question. But that's what it's for.
That was just one of my ideas, Mr. White. I'm not sure if I went picking on your road, it was just an idea I had to make to get it done quicker in-house.
I get 250 needs to be paved. I don't disagree with that. But what I'm looking at is, and I'm elected by the people of District Five and, and that's who I'm trying to look out for. And just looking at what's been chip sealed, what's been paved in this county in the last few years, we've had one project in District Five. Rest of them's been in all the other districts. The road, the 184th Street, if the public's not familiar with that, goes from 137 to the Columbia County line and there's a lot of traffic on that road and it really needs to be fixed. And it's, as more and more people move in here, that, that is kind of like a bypass around Lake City to go to Gainesville. You pick up the interstate over at 47 and you bypass Lake City. And I've been looking at that road for a long time, even before I even thought about being a county commissioner and asking why that road wasn't paved. There's a lot of traffic on that road. And I understand 250 needs to be paved and we've offered some solutions here about, Randy has about going out there and fixing the humps in the roads till we can get it paved, but at least it's paved. Mine, that's where I stand.
Mr. Cameron? You state your name and address for the record, just for the-
Tony Cameron, 11212, 177th Road, Live Oak, Florida.
Yes.
I've been sitting here listening and some of the suggestions, I think are good suggestions. Mr. Harris spoke about going in and digging out those areas that were terrible on 250 and working on them. But we are in a situation now, the state of Florida, where money is really going to be hard to come by to pave roads. Gas taxes alone pay for the majority of it. And when you look around, there's no tourists coming to the state of Florida right now to amount to anything compared to what numbers normally are. So money is down. But if we start taking County Road 250 off that's been on there for at least five years and we're looking at five years before it would be paved if it got approved today, how bad does it have to get before it becomes so dangerous that the county gets sued over people having accidents out there on it? people having accidents out there on it? And I know that 184th, I was the sheriff here for 12 years and I drove it all the time, and I looked at it, and it does have a high volume, volume of traffic. But I don't think it compares to the volume of traffic that's on County Road 250. And there's other ways to go around besides 184th. And I realize that the 5th District needs to have, you know, funding also to pave roads down there. But when you look at the Advent Christian Village and the traffic that comes back and forth constantly, every day, shift work, all, all day, all night, there's traffic up and down 250. And if you, if you had a car counter out there on it, you would see that the volume of traffic, it is astronomical. I'm one of those people, I don't sleep well, and I live right beside it. And I watch traffic go up and down it all night long. Every time I wake up, I never step out of my bed in the night that I don't see headlights going up and down County Road 250. And it's a very dangerous road, and I just encourage you to not take County Road 250 off of that list that gets, turns into DOT, because it, it is a long time. It's a long time if we go five years, if we go seven years, it's longer. And who knows if we're gonna get it in seven years if we get approved today? So, because of the situation that we're in, I ask that you consider strongly keeping County Road 250 on that list. And that in the meantime, that when Mr. Harris comes back with some figures for you, that you approve working on that road and doing some repairs that you can do at this time. But even with those repairs, to, to say that we're gonna wait seven years, that kind of stuff, that's a long time. As bad as it is now, what will it be like in seven years? And if we take it off that list, it won't even make the seven-year turnaround. So, I just ask that you reach down in there and think about it and make your best decisions.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like to speak to County Road 49 and 137. Obviously, I, I wanna, I've been in line, been down the line, but I've been in line to try to keep that moving and I, I'd like to get the support of the board to try to keep that going. We gotta prioritize them, I mean, it's just a fact. Some tough decisions gotta be made, conversations gotta be had, that's what we're here to do. So, I'm gonna ask the board to consider County Road 49 and 137 as one and two as it's, as it's been. And we're gonna have to get a consensus and start somewhere, so we can either start trying to figure out where we're gonna get and then figure out what the final spots are. I mean, we can't just sit here and look at each other, is what I'm saying. We gotta, we gotta make decisions and they're tough ones.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say this, I mean, obviously, I don't have a road here, on here. I have had some that have been approved for my district years ago, still waiting on them. I think that's just part of the process. I mean, it's, it's, we don't wanna hear it. I think when you mentioned there were five projects, then they dropped them to three, I think that was the first year I came into office, they did that. So, these guys were, you know, kinda getting, there was five board members, I think y'all were trying to be right and do one each year, and the last four years, it's been five of us and three projects, five of us and three projects, so. But I will say this, and, and the county has done a good job, they were talking about patching the, the bad spots, they've definitely done that for me on several roads, New Bern Road being one of them. I mean, I've had trailers come loose from trucks because it was so bad, but they do a great job doing that, so I, I think that's a patch, not a fix, but a patch, to get us to where we need to be, so. But I just wanted to mention that, I mean, because all you guys deserve, and just our people, the people in your district, the people in Swanee County deserve, so I agree with the chairman, I think we just need to put our heads together and come up with it and let's talk it out.
This is, this is one of those situations where everyone in this county's not gonna be happy with decisions you make. I mean, that's just a fact, but we got, we got to do the best that we can to try to accommodate everyone and, and it's very difficult to do. And it's just the situation we're in and it's time to make decisions, fellas.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Listening to all the conversations and been on this board quite a while now and I've seen some of these projects, especially 250, bad road, 49, terrible road. Dealt with that issue with the lighting project that's on 129. When I first got elected, that was one of my projects, to get a light in 129 North. Well, they took it off, put it on and took about 10 years, but they're there. Not saying that these roads won't be paved, there will be tough decisions and everybody ain't gonna be happy. I would love to see them all paved, you know, the major roads and we got, travel 49, I got family that live on 49, I'd be out there on that road, matter of fact, 184th, all the roads. But I have to say that we hope and pray for the best that DOT public can speed some of these projects, we don't never know. I know 250, you know, I got property out there in that area now and it, it is a bad road. And what I do, I go, I'm mattress factory, I don't have to travel it much, but I had a trailer and it came loose out there on that road, on 250, just a terrible road. I kinda had a tendency to, along the lines of what Mr. Harris said, some of those bad spots, I don't know how that would work, some of those bad spots, but I hate to do it like that because if you do, you patch and patch and patch and patch and patch, and the amount of money that you're patching with may exceed what DOT, it won't.
No, it won't.
It won't, okay?
If I could speak to that.
Okay.
When we did County Road 49, I think we spent somewhere in the neighborhood of $80,000. And those are good patches. I mean, we actually cut the clay out, dug down, built it back up, put the base in there, put density on it, and then came back and after we did all those areas, let the traffic drive on it a couple of weeks as well, and then went in and cut it, had the asphalt put down. And if you drive 49 today, I think we've eliminated that roller coaster effect that you're talking about.
Yeah.
And that's what I would plan to do with County Road 250. And again, I'm emphasizing that this is an interim approach only, it isn't the long-term fix. It is just an interim approach to make it safer, but the idea on 49 and the idea on 250 would be to eliminate that whole, you get the roller coaster effect, but you also get that outside of that lane sinks in, it just appears that that's a major problem. They just get lower on that outside edge of the lane and you end up with, you know, the tilt. And the people that frequent those roads that Mr. Cameron's talking about, they know where those areas are, so they try to go around them, so they cross the center line. Which, you know, if they're familiar enough and it's a clear day and you've got good weather, that's fine.
Yeah.
But at night, when it's raining hard, they're trying to do that and make it dangerous. So, I would try to eliminate all of those areas, and there are quite a few of them. I think we've, we've got the dimensions, it's 11-foot wide, which takes us the entire lane width, and we've got 1,650 feet measured right now. So, there's quite a bit that we've measured up, and I'll bring it back, hopefully, in your next regular meeting and we can talk about funding that, but I'm of the opinion that needs to be done regardless.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I also see that down 250 and other roads that the county went out and appreciate what you've been doing, cutting those shoulders down so that water flowed off, because that, some of that water be standing in there, that was very dangerous. But I, I, you know, I hope that, both of the roads, District 4 and 3, that they both come off at the same time. That's my suggestion, that's my prayer, that's my hope that that would happen. I know it's, I ain't saying it's impossible, but I don't know, it's gonna be some tough decisions, tough choices in making the decision on what we do here.
Mr. Harris, will you give me some clarity, real quick, refresh my memory, on the projects that we're gonna be turning in this year? What, the number of them is three?
It will be three.
And what was the fourth?
Well, we have, we have other roads. We've got 184th that's in Commissioner White's district, we've got 250. Now, we've got another one that's in District 4, that's 136 that we've tried before on 136 from the city limits, and it's in here, but you've got 136 from the city limits back east toward the interstate to where the new construction ended, because on that project, it started at I-75 and came back to the west, and it didn't make it even to Hogan Road on that side. So, that project's in here.
Mr. Chairman, wait a minute.
But I, but let me, let me just say this, in, in my opinion, that, that project, you know, if, if you're looking at the more significant need, probably 250 and 184th are the more significant projects right now, I just don't want us to ever lose sight of the fact that 136 has to be done. I was out there today and it's got some bad areas in it, and some of those areas need to be cut out and replaced. You've got some, you know, when it was overlaid years ago, you've got some separation and some raveling there in some areas, so some of those need to be addressed even, again, on an interim basis.
Commissioner Fleming, I don't mean to interrupt.
I, I was saying that, from 49 to whereabouts on your road that you have?
Forty, what roads do I have?
Yeah.
49 and 137 and 136.
And Commissioner Land, you're talking about 250 and-
250 and then 184th. And just to-
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, just to kinda show how long some of this takes is you had 76th on there, Mitchell Road, and you've been working on it since she was-
There was, it's probably been on there before me, I'm not gonna take full credit, there were probably some other commissioners working on it, but I was able to help bring it across the finish line.
But what I'm saying is, you're five years in now, as being a commissioner, on your fifth year, and it's, is scheduled to be paved, but how many years still?
The year that I'm either going out or getting re-elected, so, yeah.
So, two more years, I mean-
Yep, yeah, four, four years.
That's my only concern with, with, you know, moving 250 off, it's been on there for, we know, five, five years, we know, if we, if it, if we remove it, what message are we sending to DOT about the need of that project by taking it off? And, and, I mean, I want, I want Commissioner White to understand that as far as any money allocated toward District 3, I'll do whatever I can to, to help get 184th done as soon as Mr. Harris feels like our guys could jump on it, if that's a task that we could tackle in-house. I mean, I'm willing to, you know, give away chip seal funds or whatever, I know that we paused that, that program a long time ago, but there's a need out there on 184th too, and, and that road dead ends at the county line at 242, and, and-
You're talking about taking the patches, out doing the patches?
Yeah, start on the right-of-way work, start, I mean, I, I believe that DOT doesn't like there to be ri-, doesn't prefer right-of-way issues to be in existence prior to the submittal. So, I would like to ask Mr. Harris if, if we could start as soon as possible, whenever our workload allows us to start maybe working on that right-of-way in-house, acquiring that or addressing fence rows or whatever for the, for the widening of that project and, and tackle those in-house with our own funds, if, if that's something that the board, you know, chose to do.
Mr. Chairman, one thing, just, they're talking about 250, I see here, I guess that's the first phase would be that 5.84, because that's a longer road than that, that's-
Right, that's about half of it.
Two phases.
Yeah. The only thing I would say, and, and we can discuss it and do whatever, but I would say if that had been discussed with Mitchell at one point in time, being in phases, but I remember that, and I, I'm pulling off memory, they couldn't promise me like it would be done like 23, 24, it may be in between. So, my concern was having a road done, half a road, half the people on that road love you, the other half hate you, you know, and then it may be-
Better than all of them hating you.
I, I'm good with that, but it may be a few years out. I mean, I guess my, my thing would be, would we be better off, i- is it statistically better off to submit it as a whole project, even if we waited a year?
Yeah, I don't have, I mean, that's a question.
And wait the following year and just push, you, you see what I'm saying, versus doing it in progress, I, I just don't know. I don't know what's gonna be the best answer for it.
It's my understanding in my talks with DOT, and I think Mr. Pittman's here, maybe he could shed a little light on this, that, that DOT, due, due to the, the program that Mr. Harris alluded to earlier, that pot is only so big, it has to be spread around our whole district, county-wide. So, I don't think the chances are very high of them giving DOT, DOT authorizing 250 as one project due to the amount of that pie that 250 would consume inside the DOT district. Am I speaking correctly, Mr. Pittman? So, I don't, I think that, you know, it would take too much from the other counties if it, if we did, if it was submitted as one phase and they're like, no, we're not doing it, you're gonna get 40% of the whole pie for the whole DOT district, and that's not gonna happen, you're gonna have to do it in phases.
No.
So-
I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, I'm, I'm fine, I'm finished.
One thing I would say that you had spoke to about trying to do 184th in-house is, I mean, you're looking at a million and a half, million and three-quarters.
Maybe, might be more than that.
Well, that's, that's my point, I mean, it's kinda tough not to ask, not to try to get the, some help with that, I mean, that's a pretty big pill for the county to swallow and, and cut into, to some type of security that we do have far as being sound operating. And I don't, I don't disagree with some of your ideas, I don't, but I mean, the county has, has scratched and clawed and got its way back in, in, into a lot better position than, than a while back, and I mean, that's a fact, and I'm not saying that against any former commissioners, I mean, we all make mistakes and, and this board will make some, trust me. I mean, there's just things that, that happen that's not intentional, that cost a lot of money. So, I don't know, I would probably want the opinion of Commissioner White, what-
Yeah, Commissioner White, you're being quiet over there.
Well, I understand the $3 million, but that's not reoccurring funds, once it's gone, it's gone, it ain't coming back.
Right.
You got a problem there.
Right, that's true.
I don't disagree that 250 needs to be paved, but what I am telling you is, if y'all look at what's been paved in this county, District 5 has been left way behind, and I'm here to fight for District 5. And I get, I get your road needs to be paved and I'm not here, and I'm not gonna be mad however we leave here, you know, I'm gonna be happy with all of you, it's, I might be disappointed, but I just think you need to take a look at what's been going on here, and I'm telling you, District 5 has not been getting its fair share and it's got the most roads in the county. It's the biggest district in the county.
Yeah.
And we got to start doing some work down there too, and people pay taxes too.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I could, I don't have the totals totaled together on the number of paved projects, I'm talking about paved asphalt projects that have been done. I do have the number on the chip seal roads. Commissioner White is correct that that district, District 5, has gotten about half the amount of chip seal done in that district that the other districts have received. I cannot speak to the total numbers that have been spent on asphalt, I just don't have that totaled up in front of me.
I've got a question for you, Mr. Harris, and I don't mean to upset anybody when I ask this, but I understand 250 is extremely important and has been for many years, but wasn't there another road that was cut, cut through off 51 over to Dalling Park that was paved? How did that get ahead of 250?
On the way to Dalling Park, off 252.
From Lurville Way?
Oh, yeah, we, we did pave, we paved-
252.
152nd.
You're talking about 160th.
152nd.
Taylorville, whatever it is out there.
Thought it was 160-something.
That was the one that was there and they came back and did like they did it on 180, it's where they put the little-
Mm-hmm.
That's at Taylor Store that goes around the door.
Right. But my question is, how, how did that get in front of 250, I guess? Is there, is there something, is there a reasoning behind that, or was it just?
It would've been a commissioner pushing for a project-
Right.
-in that district.
I, I just didn't know if there was any other thing or if it, you know, if they was both on there together and DOT chose one, but-
I tell you what's tough, you know, I'm just gonna make a general statement. It's tough when commissioners get elected and wanna get something done, when they have to reconcile it with what's been done. Because what I see year after year, what county staff sees is commissioner trying, commissioners trying to reconcile everything that's been done for, you take, for instance, Commissioner Fleming, and he's seen it all, because he's been here so long, so he's seen all of the projects that's, that have been done in each commissioned district. projects that's, that have been done in each commissioned district. He hasn't hardly gotten any done in his district because all the roads are paved in the city and around the city. But having said that, he, he sees that, and county staff sees it, and it makes it difficult because every commissioner wants to walk in and get something approved. I mean, that's just the nature of this. But it's particularly when you look and say it's gonna be five years before something gets done.
Well, and, and I agree with that statement, and I want to be very clear with that. I, uh, there's, with all due respect to Mr. Cameron and a lot of people, there's been some false statements out there that people have been, I don't, I'm not gonna say misled, but maybe misunderstood, or someone misspoke, but people need to understand the truth. And the truth hurts sometimes, and the truth is, a lot of people thought that road was gonna get paved when that bridge was completed, thinking it's gonna get paved like right now. And that is not the truth. And if there's people out there that still think that, they need to understand that's not the truth, because I've, I've talked to people, I've had people upset with me. But sometimes the truth is just, it is what it is, and it doesn't, you know, it doesn't make it any easier, but it's a fact. And I, I don't want people to be misled and thinking that road, no, no matter what we do tonight, that road is five to seven to eight years away from seeing anything other than what the county can go out there and do and patch some holes on. And that's a fact. And that's, that doesn't make anybody in here feel better. It doesn't. But it's a fact. I mean, that's, that's, that's where we're at.
Can I speak?
Yes, sir.
The, and, Mr. Harris, maybe you can speak to it. The one I'm proposing is, just say, one and a half to 1.8 million dollars. 250 is, what, 12 million dollars, the whole thing, whatever?
It's big.
But, uh, I don't, I, you know, and I, I don't want Travis not to get his road paved, but I want to get mine paved, too. But is there any chance that putting 184th on there ahead of 250, it being a lot less money, does that make it more favorable to getting approved versus 250 because of all the money difference?
I've got an opinion on that, and it isn't scientific. My opinion is that when the projects are evaluated by DOT staff, that they look at the total cost that they can afford to put into a county, each county in a given year. And they're looking at all the counties. So that doesn't necessarily answer your question, as it pertains to the dollar amount here. So I, I think they're gonna look at the total cost. I think the bridge, I'll be honest with you, I think that bridge affected the number of projects that we got approved. You look at our TIP and look at what happened when that bridge came along, all of a sudden some projects, everything just stopped. So I think it was the cost of the bridge. And that's no one's fault that's in here. No one in the room, you know, can be blamed for that. That's just the way that it is. So I think they look at the total cost and how they can try to be equitable with all of the counties that they are working with. So that doesn't answer your question, Commissioner White, but I think that that's a part of what they're doing, is looking at total cost.
Well, if, if, just say you did 49, 137, County Road 250, and you put those three projects on, well, there's no guarantee that one or two or even three of them's, there's no guarantee any of them's getting approved.
Correct.
That's true.
So just because you put it on there doesn't mean you're gonna get it.
No, sir.
And so I'm just thinking, you know, you put 250 on there, you don't get it again, or I could put 184th on there and they could not approve it. So my question is, do we come back to this next year? If you let 250 stay on and 184th comes up again next year, how does that work? That's, that's what I'm wondering. Do, do we keep the same three roads on, or?
Well, you got to sit here and fight about it like we're doing right now.
I got you.
Same, every 12 months.
Sounds exhausting.
It, it does, but I, I wonder, which he couldn't answer, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, to say what, to comment on what Mr. White was asking, being a smaller project, going along with the other two, I don't know. I mean, and that's kind of what I was saying earlier, would that be in our best interest to do that? And then say the following year, ask for that in its entirety is what I'm saying.
Can I say this for Mr. Cameron speaks?
Yeah.
Um, we, we know that with the DOT program, any of these roads that we submit today, whichever ones are chosen, if any, it's gonna be seven years before we, five years before we see dirt work. That, that's right, right? Roughly five years before we see dirt work. With the, with the, with the price tag that comes with 250, just due to its length, we have to have assistance from DOT to help fund that. We have to. We can't tackle that number by ourselves. Could, is there, is there a way, you would agree with that, right, Mr. Harris?
I would agree, yeah.
Is there a way, we're looking at, I've heard Mr. Harris state many times that the county with our equipment can do some of this stuff cheaper than what, I mean, these are all subcontracted numbers that were given. And, and is there a way that we could take 184th and budget, budget for it and put it on a four-year, a four-year budget plan and start, start working on it? I mean, if we do a four-year or a three-year budget plan, it's 1.5 million is the cost using subcontractors to do it. If we try to do some of that ourselves, could we budget and put it on a three-year program? I mean, I'm willing to help fund that and support that and try to tackle some of that in-house. If we can do that kind of work cheaper, get it done quicker, we don't go through DOT, we do $500,000 a year until we get the project done and start hammering on that sucker next six months from now or something.
My only question is, if we do it in-house, it's like they told me when they did 176th Street there in McAlpin, once, once the county does that and it doesn't come under DOT, then it's, if I'm correct, DOT will never fund that road again.
Yeah. They won't never fund the resurfacing of it?
Well, if you approve the road, I'm assuming you're not gonna pay it.
Dirt to pavement.
I don't, I don't, I'm not-
If you approve it and you pay it, the payment's certainly new, they're not gonna make the payment, but they will fund it again at some distant point in the future when you pay it, because it's a period.
That's what, that's what Commissioner White, just so we're clear, Commissioner White's stating that if we build the road ourself, will DOT give us the funds in 15 years to resurface that road? But there would be no reason why they would. Sir?
No prohibition against.
Okay.
That's what I was, uh, thank you.
I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, you, you were, you were locked there, and I was.
And Commissioner White, I'm not picking on your road. I'm just trying to figure out how to make everybody happy.
That, that don't happen here. You're in the wrong building.
I'm trying to get creative here and come up with a, with a, with a-
Go ahead, and I'll have some.
Whatever.
Mr. Cameron.
Tony Cameron again. We're, we've got three districts, and we've got four roads that we're talking about. Why don't we have one road in each district, instead of two dis, two roads in District Four, none in District Three, or none in District Five? Why can't we have one of the three roads be 184th, 250, and 49, and leave the other one till later, if we're gonna have something left off?
I, I mean, we could, but, you know, I gotta fight for my roads, too, and they've been on there.
I understand.
So, I don't, I don't, I mean, I, I didn't mean to say I don't appreciate, I appreciate your thought process, but it doesn't work good from my side.
Right. But you're, but you're getting one.
Sir?
You're, you're, you're getting one on the list, 49. And it's a, it's a very bad road and needs to be finished.
Oh, it's terrible. I mean, all of them that I have, 137's awful, it's awful, too. 136's terrible, I mean, and then, and basically by giving, I mean, I'd be giving up 136 already. And I, I understand there's a lot of roads, but like Commissioner White said, I mean, I have a huge district with a lot of length. It's, it just travels a long way, so it, it makes me a lot of miles. But, well, it's, I don't, I don't have a problem entertaining your thoughts.
I just feel like that's something that ought to be entertained, that each district of the three that are fighting for a road should get one instead of one getting two and one getting none. So I think it's just something to fight about.
Thank you.
I like that idea.
I was gonna ask him where he was at all these years I was losing, guessing that. Hey.
Yeah, I mean, it's-
I do, I do know, Mr. Chairman, and, and again, I mean, we're all respectfully in here fighting for our own districts, you know, but to be respectful, I do know that the traffic counts on 137, according to DOT's website, is 900 cars a day, and 250's traffic counts. I don't know where at on 250, what location this count was taken, but it's 1,800 cars a day, more than double County Road 137. Um, you know, I'm willing to give and bend or whatever, but 250 is the only road in my district. I, I, I mean, we all have other roads, too. 349, I hear about it and get fussed about it a lot, too, but I, I, one battle at the time, and 250's traffic counts are way higher, and that's, and that's, truthfully, that's my first battle I'm trying to survive.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
If I could just say, there's no question, I, I don't disagree with the traffic counts, but I will tell you that 137 is the worst road in the county. I mean, it's sinking, literally. There are probably five and six-inch drops in the lane width out there. Anyone who's driven it has seen that, so it's terribly dangerous. And it, it just has to be done. In fact, it's in worse shape than County Road 49 is, literally. County Road 49 has a much higher traffic count. I can take care of the bad areas in 250 and make it safer. In fact, I told Mr. Cameron the other day, I drove up, he just happened to be turning in front of me when I was coming back on, uh, 250, and I told him I had a solution for him. I said I contacted the Highway Patrol, and they've got four troopers sitting down the road with, taking, uh, the rape, with radar, pulling people over. If you drive it at 55, it's not near as bad as when you're driving the typical speed of most travelers in this county, which is closer to 75. So it's more dangerous then. I, I'm just, listen, I recognize that everyone's project needs to be done. 250 needs to be done, 184th needs to be done. I've had emails from people over the years complaining about 184th not being done and the need to get it through there. County Road 49 needs to be done. But all I can offer is some interim solutions to try to, try to get us where all of us ultimately believe we need to be. The idea of the county going out there and constructing that road, though, does concern me. I think everyone recognizes that we're primarily set up to provide routine maintenance on unpaved roads. We pull our resources from time to time when we're in an absolute bind and we have to take on a project like 175th. That was because we couldn't get enough money from the state at the time to do that. And we've done some others, and we do chip seal, but we will do whatever the board ultimately I, I do want to encourage you to be cautious about using up that money that we've had sitting there. That's, that's a safety fund, and we don't otherwise fund a large contingency in the road department.
Yeah, I wouldn't recommend funding it all at one time and wiping out 1.5 million dollars of a $3 million balance. I mean, I think the project alone's gonna take months and, and push us into a next budget cycle anyway, come next August, September. So, so, you know, if we allocated, you know, $300,000, $400,000 of that, I think that would give us a heck of a good start onto maintaining the right-of-ways. And I, I understand that's not our normal procedure, but I will commend your crew and your guys. I'm very familiar with 120th Street, and those guys did a fantastic job on 120th Street. They cleaned the right-of-ways, they dug stumps, they hauled them off, they cut limbs, and it, I mean, it looks like a highway for a chip seal road. So we're capable of doing it, I just, our resources, our time, and, and clearly the budget. But, there again, I'm just one of five.
Mr. Chairman, you guys-
Yes, sir.
Somebody else.
Oh, sir, I'm sorry.
How you doing? My name's Ben Newman, address 17769, County Road 250.
Yes, sir.
My question is in reference to the numbers you got from subcontractors. How many quotes did you get on these projects?
On this- I don't understand the context of the question, on which projects. The estimates that we have used are assembled by our engineering consultant.
It's not, it's not bid.
These are not bid numbers.
Not bid.
That's what I'm asking.
Right, yeah.
If you've got a couple of different quotes of what this project would cost, or engineering saying they're estimating.
Right. They're, I mean, they're taking today's numbers on projects that's equivalent to it right now and, and coming up with something very close to what it is. I mean, it, it gets us in the ballpark.
Okay. That was my question, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Well, I'm, I'm good with whatever we decide, but I'm just telling y'all to take a look at what's fair.
Um-
And District Five has not been treated fair. Well, and I know we're the redheaded stepchild of the county down there, but-
No, you're not. No, you're not.
I'm just kidding about that, but I, I do, I do think that it's totally being underserved. I do.
Mr. Pittman.
Hey, Jimmy Pittman, representing North Florida. I just wanted to throw some things out, sitting here listening to the conversation. I talk with DOT often. Generally speaking, COVID has knocked everybody's economic outlook down. So the reality is DOT's probably gonna approve at best one project a year for a couple of years. That's almost always gonna be your number-one priority. They're gonna strive to do the county's number-one priority. If they have a deal killer on that one that they just can't get over, they may go to number two. But generally speaking, it's gonna be one, and it's gonna be your number-one priority. And then theoretically, the way they like to think it happens is, okay, your number-two bumps up, your number-three bumps up, and you insert a new number-four. The longer they stay on there, that's supposed to be one of the considerations that they look at when they make their selection, how many times it's been resubmitted. So I just want to kind of throw that out there. In regards to how much money, does it make a difference? Well, it does make a difference if you put a 12 or 14 million dollar job on there, you're not gonna get it.
Yeah.
So if you're kind of below that 3 million, 4 million, and anything below that, it doesn't really make a whole lot of difference. And then the last thing I'll say, try to lighten the mood a little bit, is I am hearing a lot of background talk about an infrastructure stimulus. If that were to happen to the federal government, then a pretty good likelihood that counties like us would probably get some money out of that and maybe potentially add projects. So it's good to have things in waiting. I know it's sometimes gloomy to look at things that are three and four and five years out, but just maybe hang your hat on the fact there may be some infrastructure money coming that will help boost that a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Pittman, for your comments. At this time, I'm going to give y'all my thoughts, and I'm gonna put a little bit of Mr. Cameron's thoughts into it, and I'm gonna find out what kind of board we got down the road, because I'm gonna step up and take, I'm gonna take one, and I'm gonna find out how y'all gonna work with me coming up this year, and we'll just go from there. Obviously, if we work good together, that's great, but everyone needs to understand, I'm District Four, and I gotta fight for District Four, but I'm not gonna sit here until 12 o'clock at night and not accomplish anything, and then come back next week and not accomplish anything. What I want to do right now, and I want the support of this board, and I'd like for y'all to think about it, and let's get a motion and move ahead, I'd like to see 184th priority number one, I'd like to see 137 priority number two, and I'd like to see 250 priority number three. If anybody's willing to make a motion on that, I'm ready to roll.
So move.
I have a motion by Commissioner White.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Land. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, 5-0.
Thank you, Mr. Stapleton.
I appreciate y'all. I mean, it's, it's tough. Maybe we'll get one road, and if we get one road, it's gonna be the one that's the least amount of money. We'll come back around. But I mean, I, I want y'all to know now, I, I got people out there just like y'all, all over me, and I'm gonna fight for them. And next year, when we sit down in here, somebody else is gonna have to give a little bit.
I mean, that's just the way it works, but I don't, I don't have a problem. I'm a team player. We're all about Swan County, all of us, but, uh, we're going to move forward like that, gentlemen, and I appreciate the votes.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we have, uh, one additional agenda item.
Mr. Chairman, this agenda item is simply approval of payment for work that's been performed on the sewer plant. There was a glitch that occurred and a date that didn't make it on a form, so I need ask the board, and all the work's been signed off by the engineers as well. If you could go ahead and approve this for payment, um, and authorize the release of the check, uh, financed, then we can get this contractor paid. This is coming from grant proceed.
I'll for motion to.
I have a motion by Commissioner Land.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five oh. This time, do I have anybody from the public wishing to speak? Mr. Cameron, please make your way to the podium. We already have your address.
Mr. Cameron, again, um, I want to tell you, I don't like to be involved in politics since I retired. This has been an experience and I appreciate all of you standing up the folks that you represent, but using common sense and coming up with an answer. I also would like to say that in reference to the Swan County Health Department, I was out and I had my vaccine, my number one and my number two, and that place operated so smoothly, it was unbelievable. They did everything they were supposed to, they kept things moving, they got you through, they sat you there for your fifteen minutes and checked on you the whole time and waved you out the door. And everybody there was polite, everybody there did an excellent job and the service could not have been better. Representative Swan County will.
Thank you, thank you for those comments. We appreciate that. Anybody else from the public wishing to speak? Mr. Scott, you got something you'd like to add?
Just like to share, uh, we finished up the project at the arena, reached out to the representative's office about setting up a time for ribbon cutting and Fridays were best for him. Hopefully, we get the senator here also, maybe former senator that actually funded it, but, um, but, uh, anyway, we'll, uh, reach out to y'all for dates, but looking for a Friday, probably next, within the next month, I hope. I just want to put that on your radar. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Scott.
This time, seeing no one else wishing to speak on public comment, I'll close that.
You got one?
Sir? Okay. Yes, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Glenn Allen. I have that property over there by one thirty-six and I seventy-five. I spoke here January first. Had some of my numbers wrong because I was working off my brain and sometimes, you know, this thing's just dragging out, but, um, I did write some stuff down basically so that I don't, I, I, I went back to my records, so. That way I can get, get it right. Okay, how many of you know about, uh, the county discussing infrastructure at one thirty-six and I seventy-five in two thousand and eighteen? Do you know about that stuff? How many of you knew about it back as far as two thousand and fifteen?
Sir, can you, uh, please let us know what you're getting to? I mean, we're not here to question the crowd. I mean, question the board.
How, how many of you attended the meetings that were held at the state farmer's market and other, but not here at this annex? Who in this room will the plan at one thirty-six and I seventy-five impact where you live in any way? Who in this room will this plan directly impact your property, where you live and other property that you may own? I am the only one in this room, I'd believe, that will, this, this project will directly and significantly affect by, by my land and by, by this land project. I own sixty-five to seventy acres right there. My home is there. On one side, there are plans for an education center that will be backed up to my house, separated by a ninety-foot buffer. On the other side, there are plans being considered for a business and industrial center. Again, a ninety-foot buffer, but what I believe is that they're planning on using my ninety, my land of ninety-foot buffer for about a thousand feet for this huge property. They also say that my residence, that any residence within a quarter mile of the project will be required to use county and water sewer. This again directly affects my home as I will be required to use the water and sewer system. I also own eleven plus acres on the land that is HCI zoning. Concerning the impact of this project is going to directly affect my land, where I live and that I am and what, and was a major stakeholder in this development, I feel I should have been informed directly and formally in the early stages of this planning. In the adoption of this amendment, it states that the affected landowners was supposed to be notified and that affected lands was supposed to be posted with signs to inform the public. I own eleven plus acres being directly affected by this commercial center. I also, at that time, managed forty-nine acres of neighboring properties that is being affected by the education center. I was never contacted nor did I ever see any signs posted concerning the land's use changes. I was never notified in any way in years two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, or eighteen. First notification that I had was when I met Randy Harris, contacted me on, in, in March of two thousand and nineteen. He met me on my property, he induced me, what called coerced me and basically raped me into selling it for signing a contract by offering me any, nothing but gloom and doom if I didn't sign that contract to sell. The only offer I was proposed was with his, with his friend Ronald Adams of N C Y T. Randy Harris approached me knowing exactly what he was doing. He had had a plan and the following grew with it. He even offered me a contract that had been signed by Ronald Adams the day before. I then went to my computer and began to do research. Within hours, I attempted to negate the sales contract. I read about a semi-secret and under the radar meetings that had taken place. Harris Meeks was present at all of these meetings. Someone mentioned that they felt that the public should be better informed about these plans. One of the employees or officials stated that projects should be kept as quiet as possible for as long as possible. On or about June twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen, Rhett Bullard stated that since the meeting primarily consisted of county employees, that there should be a specific, a public meeting to inform the residents about what was going on. Miller said there were several public meetings, but there was, had been limited participation. On or about February third, two thousand and fif- fifteen, a semi-closed-door meeting was held at the farmer's market. Those in attendance were. Jerry Martin, Julie Dunis, John Reddick, Randy Harris, Ron Meeks, Helen Miller, Walter McKenzie, Bill Lawrence, Rhett Bullard, Louis Gooden, Susan Ramsey, Toby Adams of Elizabeth Porter's office, Jay Thorman and Ronald Williams, and Leroy Marshall of Swan County, Swan Hamilton and Columbia Counties members and some of the D E O officers. Miller said, this is a really big deal. Miller said, this is a huge goldmine potentially. Investors are looking for one person to talk to. They don't want to have to deal with multiple rules and regulations and people. If we work together as a region, we can overcome these deficiencies. On the personal note, I took Miller's statement to imply that I am a significant landowner and was considered one of the deficiencies. They discussed the groundwater contamination, infrastructure requirements, zoning classifications, aesthetics and future site development plan and the conceptual site development of the plans. Miller, she's, she had, Miller said she had contacted D E P and they provided her a list of five properties that would need, that would need, uh, required remediation.
Sir, sir.
A personal note, remediation at Department of Environmental Protection, that would be mean.
Yes, sir.
What?
I got a question for you.
I'm not being out of order here, sir. This is important.
I'm the chairman and I'm running this meeting and I got a question for you. If you want to answer it, we'll keep going, but I have a question. And my question is, how long is your delivery? Because you get three minutes is how we do it in our closing comments.
This, this, this is taking about five years to boil up.
And I don't have a prob-, I don't have a problem at all with you speaking, but when you had something this important, you should have asked to be put on the agenda and we could have got you on the agenda and everybody would have some backup documentation to know what you're talking about. Because really tonight, you're have, you have a grievance with the county, obviously, and Mr. Harris, and for that to happen, I mean, you need, we're going to need to take it up with legal counsel, but I don't have a problem when you finish in reading your statement. I just needed to know a kind of somewhat of a timeframe. You may go ahead.
I've got about five pages here, I guess. I've already read three or four. Not much.
Move ahead.
Thank you. On a, on a personal note, when it comes to remediation at the Department of Environmental Protection, that would mean to clean up groundwater supply from contamination. I would like to introduce that I have owned that property since two thousand and one. It had a well. My family and I hadn't consumed that water since two thousand and one. I built a house on it in two thousand and eight and lived there continuing to consume that water. I and my family did continue that groundwater. I had been fighting eye, eye blindness and so has my ex-wife. I understand she is considered blind. I am about ninety percent blind in one eye and fighting to save the vision in the other. In fact, in the last couple of years, I have had occasion to be totally blind for a few days. Once I started to have problems, I have been occasions considered that my ex-wife and I may have been damaged by the drinking water, the contaminated well might have been blindness done, does not run hurt in her family and does not run in my family. I recently read that contaminated water that contains fuel, oil, radiator, coolant and other byproducts will cause eye problems and blindness. I would like to be really interested to know which properties needed remediation and if mine had been included. I would be concerned for any of my other neighbors that may be affected and may be having eye problems or other related health problems on this issue. Randy Harris started that, stated that the water in the sewer would cost five to seven million, well, let me jump past that. Planning and zoning, uh, director passed out, uh, passed out maps of the immediate area that showed the zoning, FEMA flood zones, river, flood plain, wetlands and surface waters. Ron Williams said that recently passed amendment one dealt with water. I have a green prairie on my land, so does this mean that my property will again be affected? Or does this mean that they may be planning to also take that property from me? Sharon Martin of the D E O Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, they are huge opportu- said, there are huge opportunities that you all have concerning the attendance from the tri-county area. Florida Department of Economic Opportunity has a, has a heck of a ring in that, that the economic opportunity, the few inside information, may I add, uh, the econo-, the few with inside information may have had. During the meeting, it was stated that this development is a win-win situation for a limited few in the tri-county area. They then planned a midterm stakeholders' meeting in March and a final stakeholders' meeting in May. Definition of a stakeholder is a person that who has interest and, or a concern in something, especially a business. I own eleven acres in the H C I zoned area. I should have been contacted and informed formal concerning what the county was planning to do with my land. Remember when Miller said the builders don't like to deal with multiple people? They like to deal with one person, Ronald Adams of N C Y T. That is why they cornered me and raped me. Certain parties want to bully me out of my property and perhaps properties if they start looking at my green prairie, a semi-wetland. These details are quoted from documents that I found during my research in early two thousand and nineteen. I had to research it because parties were keeping me in the dark. Now, I would like to enlighten you as to my personal experience. In two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, I sensed and witnessed some movement on the property frontage out on one thirty-six. In the beginning, I went to the tax appraiser's office and asked if they knew what was going on. I visited them several times over a couple of years. Each time, they said I needed to talk to, who I needed to talk to was not there, so I offered my name and a contact phone numbers. I never received any phone calls. I managed the forty-nine acres of land owned by the Red family. In exchange, I would have the first right of, of refusal to purchase. In late two thousand and seventeen, that right was stolen out from under me. Then I went to the county appraiser's office again, and this time, they sent me to Ronald Meeks of Building and Zoning. He was out to lunch the first day, so I left my name and number. He never called. A short while later, I went to Meeks' office again and we did speak. I told him that I live at I seventy-five and one thirty-six and had a concern why my first right of refusal had been taken from me. I asked Meeks what was going on. Was there any zoning chart changes going on? He said, no. I acquired the cell phone number and with, with his phone number and with each call, he said, nothing was going on over there. Then he would not answer, then after a while, he would not answer the calls. I would leave a message and he did not call me back. Several calls and visits two thousand and seventeen, eighteen and nineteen, Meeks said nothing was going on. My last visit to Meeks in two thousand and nineteen, I asked the right question and reluctantly he printed out an ordinance two thou-, two oh one six dash oh one and a map showing the H C I properties, but he still insisted that nothing was going on. My eleven acres was on H C I, was on the H C I plan. So, I went home and now that I knew what to look for, I researched and found a lot of information that country, contradicted Meeks. There was actually a lot going on. Harris and Make, Harris, Meeks and Privat have got to be part of this. Harris and Meeks was at every meeting and Privat was diligent at his job. Harris signed the D E O contract that states that program required number D. Will the public infra-, this is the question from them, will the public infrastructure improvements be for the exclusive benefit of any single company, corporation or business entity? Harris said, no. In that is, that is the agreement, then why is the neighbor and likely friend buying up all the land? How else would Ron Adams, N C Y T have known about the project and the timing to buy if, if it were not for Harris? I could have bought the land that was directly in, that would directly link my land to one thirty-six, but because I was told nothing was going on, I could not entertain the asking price for the three and a half acres and or seven point nine acres of land. So, I did purchase eighty acres more over in Columbia County in two thousand and eighteen. I could have really, I could have easily purchased one or both of those acre lands that would have connected my H C I land to one thirty-six, but I was being told nothing was going on. If, if Meeks had been honest with, when I asked him, I would have without a doubt bought the small parcel to get me a land to one thirty-six. I would not be here as I am today, fighting to keep my land against N C Y T, Adams, Harris and whoever else is involved. I would have the most and best land in that corner. They lied to me, coerced me, bullied me into a corner. I believe the way this launched and it isolated me, that this was without a doubt a plan to cut me out of the land. Harris, Meeks and Privat, I've been in touch with them through this whole thing, basically. I contacted an outside property appraiser so I could get a realist, a realistic idea of what was about, I, I had, I contacted an outside property appraiser so I could get a realistic idea of what this was about. I can't, contacted Chase Moses. At first, he was positive and willing to look into it and give me an evaluation and appraisal. I told Moses that I had been talking to Privat. At that time, I did not know that Privat was the attorney for Swan County. I did not know that my fight was not only against Ronald Adams, Randy Harris and N C Y T, but I was also possibly fighting the county of Swan. I did not know until May of two thousand and nineteen as to who and what my fight was against. It's a monster and they have a lot of power, but here I am a year later, I'm still standing, I'm still fighting, I'm not going to lose. A day or two later, Moses called me and said he could not help me and was not willing to give me an appraisal. I begged him. He sounded really sincere when he turned me down. I was hiring him to do a job, it's what he does. I was willing to take him my payment in advance. He refused. Why would he refuse to do his job? Why would he refuse to do his job and what he does? The following Saturday, Privat called me. He and I had words, and I stood loud, proud, and strong. His last words to me was, "Don't expect any help from Chase." Now I know why Chase wouldn't appraise my land. I had hired the law firm of Douglas and Carter in Lake City. They handled a couple of interrogatories for me. They backed out when they figured out who they were fighting. They owe me a refund. I had to hire out of county so that county and, the county and political pressure would not be so much a concern. I was fighting this all by myself, since Mr. Land saw the writing on the wall and started to ask questions because Harris and NCYT got greedy. On the other side of town, I am bringing my issue to the residents of Swanee and Hamilton and Columbia Counties. At the meeting I attended on January 1st, Mr., I forget your name, but you used the word transparency several times. I was particularly such, in, in this particular situation concerning my land and where I live, I see everything but transparency. I see a supersized can of worms. These guys cannot get away with this, with taking my land. These guys made a plan to put one over on a few people and line their pockets with gold. I would consider this organized, deceptive, and coercive. Actually, I have a lot more words that define what I'm going through here. Friends and neighbors, fellow taxpayers and citizens, I need your help, please. Now, this is just one more page, and this is words from Privat. It is not the counties, it is not up to the county to keep you informed about such information. Talking about the, the grant and all that. He also said, "Don't expect any help from Chase." And he also said, "Are you going to destroy this man's dream that he has been planning for years?" I feel I should have been informed. I own 11-plus acres of land in the target area for development. This would make me a serious stakeholder in this development. When I tried to hire Chase Moses for an appraisal, he denied me service. I was going to the Swanee County Appraiser's office from 2016 to 17. I was going to Building and Zoning 2017, 18, and 19. I was asking questions. From what I read in past reporting, that some people require, requested to keep this project as quiet as possible. That is what they did. They apparently did not want me in the development plan, so they told me nothing. And he also said, "Are you really going to destroy this man's dream? He has been planning for all these years." We started this communication in March of, and April of 2019. Privat said to me, Privat's, Privat had said this was planned. So was the plan to keep one, me, unknowing so that they could organize against me, shut me out, and steal my land and my dr, and my dreams. If they hadn't lied to me, this would not be their dream, this would be my dream. And all of this stuff, with the exception, well, I made a couple little things here, but everything can be backed up by these papers right here, if anybody wants them. And I'd like to know who out here is the strongest person, maybe, that might want to deal, might want these things, possibly? That is not necessarily friends of these guys, whoever's involved.
We appreciate your comments, sir. Thank you. By this time, we'll go to closing comments. Mr. Privat, you have anything?
No, sir, I don't. Thank you.
Mr. Harris?
No, sir.
Commissioner White?
I just want to say thank you to the board for, I appreciate you, Mr. Stapleton on the road, and I'm glad we could all come to a conclusion on it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Land?
Yes, sir, I'd like to echo Commissioner White's. Thank you, Mr. Stapleton. We all worked together here and scratched out. It took us a little while, but we scratched out a good plan, and I appreciate you giving a little rope, and I'll return the favor one day. Got my word on that, on, on, on working together.
It's fine, I got, I'm gonna have both of y'all's numbers in my phone to forward and pause.
But Mr. Fernal was expecting that $20,000 deposit from you by next week. But that's it, that's all I got.
Commissioner Fleming?
I would like to say that, this is, this is evidence. When you work together, you get things accomplished. I'm proud that, that, to compliment tonight, to compliment, but I'd like to say this. I experienced, our fire chief, Chief Hand. I, I, could you stand up a minute? Could you come to the podium better yet? Thank you. I would like to personally say that I really appreciate you. God put you in that position for a reason. And today, I experienced some, well, I was up at the laundry, through town, and I saw your, your guys, how they work, how they performed today. And, and I said, I sit there and I just watched, and I said, you know, I think I'll just bring this out in the meeting tonight to let you know how much your guys that work for you, the professionalism that they use, how they use it. I saw one of the units about 3:30 today, I don't know which, which one of the guys they were, but they came up to the traffic light, and the gentleman in the pickup, he blocked that traffic to allow two of your units, your first responders, go out on a call. I saw some going west of town, east, we are west, east of town. But these guys use professionalism, I very much appreciate that. The way they handled the traffic, the sheriff usually direct traffic, but your unit with that guy in the truck, he blocked all that traffic. And he stopped them, and enabled, to enable your guys to go to the call. I don't know what the call was, but I really appreciate the professionalism, let them know. And I do watch, I look at, tell Mr. Harris, how these guys be working. But when we got, you're being accountable for what you're doing, but we hired you to put in that position. Randy was put in the position, I appreciate him. He make this county move, and you're doing the same thing. You're making your guys do what they're supposed to do.
Well, I, I very much appreciate the comment, and I feel very blessed to be in this position. But the professionalism and everything of our guys, yes, I hold them accountable, but we're very fortunate in this community to have some great employees working for us, and I'm only as good as, as they are.
Thank you.
So all of the credit goes to them, for sure, and, but I will definitely let them know about your comments, and I greatly appreciate them. We're, we're very fortunate to get to serve some great citizens in this county, and, and that's what we are, as public servants. And like I said, I just, I feel, I feel very fortunate to get to lead this department and, and look forward to many more years to come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you leave, I knew you was gonna, I'll just piggyback off that. I was gonna just mention it to you after the meeting, but since Commissioner Fleming brought up, I was contacted by a family in my district as well this week, and they just spoke to how courteous your folks were. Didn't really work out the way that that family wanted it to, but nonetheless, they were very impressed with your, your staff and all, so.
Well, unfortunately, we, we have to deal with people in their worst times.
That's right.
But part of our job is to try to, you know, ease that for the people that are involved in the situation. Sometimes it's tough, and it's one of the things that we have to deal with as part of this job, but, but we know that going in, so. Just to give you guys a heads up, if you do get any calls up in the area of 129 and I-10, we did have a CND landfill, had a little fire in it up there in that area today. So DOT does have some signs out on I-75 for smoke, but there's, you know, possibility that there's gonna be some low-line smoke in that area tonight and in the morning.
You mean I-10? You mean I-10?
I-10 and 129. Yeah, in, in that area, it's just back behind the badcock warehouses in there.
By the water tower there.
Oh, yeah.
That's right.
On the north side of I-10.
Good leadership.
Thank you, Chief Hand. Commissioner Hale?
The only thing I'll add is, is I do appreciate all of us working today together. Appreciate you stepping up, Mr. Chairman, making them cuts on your own there, so I appreciate that. And just, I do want to say what Mr. Cameron was saying about our, our staff at the Health Department.
Yes.
Very impressed with that.
I get someone every day telling me something about them.
I just can't thank them enough. My parents are going tomorrow for their second shot, so I wish them good with that. But, and the other thing I'd say is, is, you know, we're talking about our, our staff here. I mean, we've got a lot of good staff, folks, and I just want to mention them again. I try to do this once a month, but I do want to ask the public, please be patient. We've got dirt roads that are falling apart. We've had rain in every district. You guys, I know, are hearing it, but I just wish this, or not wish, but just ask of the community to work with us. Our guys are working hard, and, and they're gonna get them cleaned up and get it back passable, so, that's all.
Thank you, sir. I don't really have anything else other to add that, other than, it's a, it's give and take, you know? It's a, tonight, it was my night to give, so, I mean, I just try to work together and when you're, when you're at it.
$20,000, I heard.
Sir?
$20,000, I heard.
Kind of taking it on both ends.
That's right.
But no, I appreciate everybody's patience. I mean, this is a, it's, it's a hot seat when it's, there's two or three times a year that it's a hot seat with items such as this, and I mean, it's a, it's difficult. But, you know, when you get at an impasse, I mean, just, it's time to, you're not gonna get anything done if somebody don't give a little bit, and I'm fine with that, 'cause next year, I'm gonna have four on the list.
That's right, there you go.
We are, we are. No, I'm just kidding. But hopefully, we'll get one of these roads approved this year, and we move forward. And just thank everyone for their patience tonight, sitting through this. Just be safe, and look forward to seeing y'all again.
Yes.
I have a motion to approve, or, motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
To adjourn, I'm sorry.
He's the second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Land, second by Commissioner Hale, all in favor, say aye.